I hereby call to order the Jefferson County Board of Zoning Appeals. Have a form present, all members are present. I would ask the members that had an opportunity to review the minutes from the past meeting, Board of Zoning Appeals, any change or correction, if not, I'm looking for approval.
So moved.
Got a proper motion?
Set.
And second, any other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Do we have anybody to have citizens input tonight for issues for the Board of Zoning Appeals? Okay. Being known, we'll proceed to our first item. It's a determination if a salt cave sauna is in allowed use in the A1 Agricultural Forestry District. And do we have someone here to speak on that behalf?
Yeah, miss, this thing from me.
Okay.
She can explain it better to me, or to you, I don't really know one. That's new and on me, that's why she's in front of me.
Salt cave?
Hi.
Hello.
Okay, so I have these two dilapidated buildings, I own 55 acres in Jefferson City County, okay? These two dilapidated buildings, I'm going to renovate them and I want to do like a healing center. What I mean by that is not having a thousand people come and go all day long, but by appointment, I want to get a sauna, and it's an infrared sauna. And if anybody, does anybody know what an infrared sauna is? Yeah? You do. Tim, you know?
No, I don't. The heat comes from the...
Okay, so it's a very safe sauna, it's light that you would get from the sun without the UVs and the bad rays and all that kind of stuff. It's like, it's like light that goes into your body and it causes a detox, takes out the chemicals, it helps for muscles, tissue repair, it helps like just about everything in your body. It relaxes you, it's stress-free, it's a great thing. And then there's a salt therapy thing that I have in there too, a device, and it takes care of the long-term COVID, it helps lungs, it helps COPD, anybody that's sickly or can't breathe, they go in there, they take a 20-minute session, and you start to breathe, starts to heal your lungs and your whole body. I mean, it's a great, great thing. It also has chromotherapy in it, which is different color lights, which heals different things in your body, you know, it heals your brain, it gives you energy, it wakes you up, you know, it gets your blood circulating. It's totally safe, they're all over Knoxville, they're in Bristol, around here, all over the world, not Jefferson City, but we want to bring it in, so. You know, it's very safe, it's not, it's not anything dangerous, it's 20-minute sessions, it'll be by appointment only, and I want to do some with those buildings, and I think this would be a great thing, so. What do you all think?
Well, basically, you're in an A1 zone, okay? So if you, if you're looking here at some of the things that are allowed in an A1 zone, what would that, something very similar to that be? Which is basically, you could have a pedicure, manicure shops, you could have a massage therapist, you could also have a tanning salon, which is, you know, may not exactly be, but it's sort of similar to me in that type of use. I mean, what do y'all think? I mean, okay. The one thing that you would do, I mean, basically, we're, tonight, we're just making a determination of it, it's going to be allowed, but then you sort of have to come back with a site plan for us to at least show us that you've got some parking for...
Oh, wow, I have tons of parks.
That would be later. The main thing is to determine...
Twenty acres of parking.
Yeah, the main thing is tonight to see if we think that's something that's very similar to that, and I'm just asking if you think, what she's explained there to a certain extent is heavy in here already?
Well, if I may say, the sauna is like, it's laying, you're laying in lights, but it's burning you from the inside out, that's not exactly healthy. This is a healthy thing, it's, it's creating circulation in your body, it's healing your tissues, your muscles, all the, you know, athletes and stuff, they, they go to these places, pay thousands of dollars to just go sit in it, just so it heals their body up. It's 100% safe.
Okay. So, uh, any questions? Or if not, then I'll entertain the motion.
I make the motion move.
That'd be in allowed use in an A1 zone? Okay, I got a proper motion?
Yes, sir.
And a second, okay? Any other discussion before we vote? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. That being the only item, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
You'll make a motion, Mr. ...
Got a proper motion?
Second motion.
And second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Are we ready? Uh, having a proper form here, okay. I hereby call to order the Jefferson County Regional Planning Commission, having a form, all members are present. I would ask the members that had an opportunity to review the minutes from the last meeting, any change or correction, please note, otherwise I'm looking for approval.
So moved.
Got a proper motion?
Set.
Set. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right, before we do citizens input tonight, I'm going to make an announcement.
First, Terry, first, we have a new member, Austin Brooks here.
Yeah, we want to welcome Austin Brooks, a new county commissioner and a new member to the planning commission tonight, this will be his first meeting, so be nice to him. And we do have, yes, I need to address that as well, and here's the thing, is this, is that we're welcoming Jordan tonight, and basically, he's filling in tonight, because it's with sad hearts that our planner, that has been here with us for 23 years, passed away a couple of weeks ago from a heart attack, and that was David Williams, and, you know, Jefferson County, he did a lot for Jefferson County through the years, I mean, he, he really did, and I can tell you that he will, he will be missed, and we're not sure if Jordan is just filling in tonight, it's going to be temporary, but we may have another full-time planner that will be coming on. So, but it is with sad hearts tonight that we do that, but we do welcome Jordan to help us tonight, and I have, he does do Dandridge and Jefferson City, so he's familiar with some things that go on in Jefferson County as well, so.
And I learned everything I know from David Williams, so.
So, anyway, thanks.
Like anything wrong, it's his fault.
Okay. All right, so before we get into citizens input tonight, I'm going to make this announcement, because this is it. I know a lot of you are here for Karm, okay? But Karm has been rolled until next month, and there were some things that happened today that, some things that were introduced, as far as that goes, and when they were introduced, basically, the county attorney looked at it and made a decision that he needed to be at this meeting, which he was not able to be at. So, the attorney with Karm and everything else agreed to that, so basically, that has been rolled to next month, because we're going to need, we're going to need our county attorney here when this happens, okay? So, if you, you're welcome to stay, but I wanted to give you that in case you don't want to, per se, and here's the thing is, is if, now, at the citizens input time, if there's anything here that's not on our agenda, that you would like to speak to, you have that time and welcome to do it, but if it was something on Karm that you wanted to speak with, then you may want to wait and hold your comments until next week, when that will be, next, I'm sorry, next month, when that will be on the agenda, but it's your choice, so. This just came up, I mean, this just got thrown on us, and I apologize for that, but once the information was presented, then it was in our, our attorney says, he says, I need to be present, and he says, and I could not be there tonight, so that's sort of where we stand. But there again, if, if there's any citizens that want to do anything else that's not on the agenda, you're welcome to come up and speak, I had some people turn in, but it looks like just about everybody here was here for Karm, that had signed up to speak, per se, so that's where we stand on that issue for tonight. So at this time, it is open for citizens input, do I have anybody that wants to speak? Yes, sir.
It has to do with Riverland.
Yes, sir, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, I understand that's next week.
Next month, yes, sir, next month. Next month.
Oh, next month.
Okay. Mike, Mike?
Sir, if you, if you could come up to the podium, so.
I apologize. My, my question is, my question is a process question, because I'm not sure what a concept plan is, and then a regular plan and other things. I mean, there are a lot of people that have concerns about Karm, I have concerns only because it's a farmland and that, but, so, we don't want to get into that, I just don't understand sort of the steps that we want to go through, and that's, that's really what I'd like to...
Okay, I mean, based on that, because basically, what they were presenting tonight was a concept plan for something that was there, and basically, if you look through our guidelines, a concept plan could be there, and it could be like a preliminary to a certain extent, okay? And it really depends on the direction that they plan on going, and that would have been one of some of the questions that we would have addressed with them tonight, of which direction they want to go, as to what was going to be required, and how many steps were going to be involved to do this, okay? But the first thing, I think the first thing is, is that we would have addressed is, was, would have been the plan that they submitted to us in our packets, as far as that goes, and, and it is just basically a concept. Now, that being said, whether, if they, if they're going to go through, there's two ways you can do it, you can do it as a subdivision, you can do it as a permanent belt, and so that, that would have been some of our questions for them, how, which direction they want to go, but since they're not here to answer those types of questions, that won't be addressed until next month.
My concerns would be, is it, is it in effect becoming a commercial property? And, and we don't need to answer that, those are the kinds of questions that, that I would like to see addressed, and I just...
So, any, anything else for me? No, sir.
Can I please speak? My paper's in there, I thought there was... Can I speak? My paper's up here.
Okay.
I thought there was a meeting following this one with the commissioners. Hi, my name is Lisa Neal, I live at 1909 Variety Way here in Dandridge, and I'm actually here on old business from the commissioners meeting last week that has to do with zoning, but considering there's a similar thing here, I feel that maybe it is okay for me to speak, even though the commissioners are not all here today. There are two areas on 92 that were up for rezoning, my entire community came out here en masse two weeks ago to tell you, we did not, we were not interested in turning our beautiful 92 corridor into a commercial, commercial area. I sent emails to every commissioner two times, I came here and I spoke again, and I'm just real curious, why we were voted down, and they are able to go ahead and move on with this rezoning? Who are, who was being represented? Nobody stood up here to speak in favor of the rezoning, but an entire community came out here against it, and most of the commissioners, 11 of them, voted against us. Why are you voting against us and your colleagues that are representing us? I'm just very curious, it's just, and on top of that, we're going to spend $45,000 to get our input, you got our input and you voted against us, and I just really, this is not a, this is an actual question, I really just want to know why.
Ma'am, we're a different commission from what you...
Okay, I just thought since it was zoning, I could bring it up, so I have to wait till July to speak on this?
When you say this, this group...
I see.
We didn't, if you had been here the month before, when it came before us, and we made our recommendation, there was only one person that actually, I think, showed up, okay, at that point in time, and because the planning commission does not rezone property, all we do is make recommendations, county commission is the only one that can rezone property. So, it, it came from the recommendation then to that, because we only had one person at the planning commission meeting who came to speak up, as far as that goes, and so, the other, the other thing is, when you came before county commission, that's, you know, they, they actually rezone property, we don't, and so that's why I say, this, this board here did not...
I understand, I just thought maybe I could get some answers, because you're dealing in the zoning issues, and I don't know why, you know, it's an A1, it's, now it's going to be C2, so you're letting a business go up because it qualifies for that property, but anyway, I figured I was at the wrong meeting.
That's okay.
I'll come back in July, and hopefully I'll get some answers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One question for you.
Sir, if you, if you'd come to the podium, please, and... If you'll give us your name, and, did you, did you sign up, sir? I did not. Okay, your name is? Bruce Jacobson. Okay. Want to need my address? Uh, yes, please. 1016 South Wind Circle. Just kind of a general question, just, I've been here for a couple of meetings, and there's, there's things you guys are discussing, proposals, some land use issues and that type of thing, but there's never any drawings posted that people can look at. Do you have a means to do that, or copies of what's being requested?
Typically, the only copies that, that are presented, as far as maps and things like that, are presented just to us as members, per se.
There's always copies in my office.
Yeah, you can go to the zoning office and look at those copies at any time, if you, if you need to.
Okay.
As far as it goes, but as far as our meetings and anything else, although tonight, we are going to try some, to do something of that very nature, and see how it works for us, and so, so that people, so mainly so that we can see what's going on as a group, and plus then the owners would be able to review this as well.
And I just, I just, as a citizen of the area here, would like to just see some of this stuff, and if you could post it, would be wonderful.
Well, I know it doesn't go on the website.
No, but just, you're always...
But, but there's always, there's, anything that's going to be on our agenda, that's, that's presented as flats and everything else, you, you can always go to the zoning office and review that, you're wel, you know, you're welcome to do that.
Do you have anything that I could pick up and take home and look at it?
Yeah, what are my copies for me?
Wonderful, that's what I need to know. Thank you. Thank you. Any others? Being known, we'll go into new business. The first is a site plan review for commercial storage facilities to be located at 1980 East Highway 2570, Lot 1 of the Old Dandridge Newport Highway LLC subdivision, Dandridge by Old Newport Highway LCC, and by Mr. Robert Deventhal.
You have small copies, but I've got some big ones to be in my little seat.
Well, I think the... Trying to remember the issue where we planned that we were...
You want to wait till everybody clears that? We can hear a little better.
We'll let the herd get out first.
All right, let's proceed. Okay. Uh, if you remember, this was before us, I think, last, last month. Yeah, February, yeah. And I think some of the, it was the drainage, I think, was our, our big issue, and I see we're here, we now have sort of some retention that's drawn in there for the drainage, and so if you had an opportunity to review that. Stormwater, did you look at the site today?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's pretty, it's pretty level size. It's about as level as you're going to get, so.
That's flat. We're in Texas.
Calculations, I see the layout. Did you get any hydrologic calculation?
No, I doubt we got any of that, and David probably is in there saying it probably wouldn't be necessary, because of the size of the site, that's where that goes, so.
Is that one lot on the track, or?
Which one are?
Is that one lot on the track?
One lot? It's one of the, one of the lots on the track.
Yes. Is that true?
Right one, yeah.
It's the one, one on the end, right?
Correct, yeah, on the corner lot.
Down our next road.
Those are fronts of two roads. So we've got his, he's look here, he's got drainage areas and pipe all the way down to get us down to the retention of the rip ramp, so.
So you all got, you've got the thing piped into the pond from both sides?
Basically, we're ditching it.
Okay, ditch?
Ditching it, yeah.
Okay, I was just looking at what, looks like the...
Oh, oh, okay, you're looking between it, yeah, now, we are piping between the buildings. I was looking at the outside, yes, yes. That's the only way to get it there.
Yeah, so...
Because it's so flat.
Yeah, so that, that should cover the scenery areas, as far as it goes, and there's one little area that lets go the ditch.
Yeah, just basically got inverted crown in the road, that way, no water's running into the building, instead of running down the center, and it will pop it around.
All right.
Y'all submitted SWIP plan to TDEC?
Um, no, we haven't.
So for acre?
What's the size of this?
Definitely over acre.
Oh, it's over acre, yeah.
Yeah.
Think y'all got to do that.
Yeah, we'll have to, I mean...
What is that?
To do with stormwater filtration, local plant, yeah.
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 Does that, part of transportation?
No, TDEC. I was just asking, do the drainage plan, so now we're going to have to move to the next step, which...
Yeah, that's kind of step one. That, that's fine, I understand, because that's all we requested was, was that...
Yeah, because this is over acre, we're going to have to...
Yeah, you will.
We're going to have to, yeah, yeah, we're going to have to do it.
All right. Any questions? Anything? Did you see? If not, I entertain the motion.
We don't move post-pond until we have that done.
Oh, that is, oh, that drainage in there?
If they've not got that approved, can we even approve it?
I think, I, I think you guys have to approve it first, before they'll even take a look at it, that's what I understood.
It's a separate process, that's something they have to do separately anyways, that they're liable if they don't, if they have to.
I mean, I can get this for the plans I have, I add a few details to it, and we can get T-DOT, or TDEC. Yeah, they'll, they'll, but...
Does it need to happen in a certain order then?
Well, when you think about this, when somebody comes in to build a project for us, as far as that goes, and everything else, they've not actually gone out there and put in the drainage ditches before they bring us the site plan, this is part of the building process that they would go through, you know, from, from that standpoint. One of the things that we don't require is, and as build effort is completed, to ensure that, but the thing is, when they, pretty much when they order for their stormwater protection permit, it's going to look at some of it, where the water is going to go, and if this is the plan they submit, then that's what's going to have to be in. I want to make that work on motion.
Yeah, it's, it's a state requirement, our local regs don't require a SWIP, it's just state, so, but it looks okay to me in terms of our local regs. Just my overview, review.
Okay. Other questions?
I'm going to go, just want clarification, so the, the TDEC stuff, you're saying that it doesn't matter what order this happens in, just I'm doing a site plan?
No, because we could submit a site plan, okay? And, and so, they may come back six months later, before they ever decide to do any grade work or anything else, before they ever actually get, have to get a stormwater protection permit. Okay? Okay, you know, what we're saying is, is this site plan is the way it's designed right here, it's going to work to handle the drainage and everything that's going to be there, plus the improvements that they've got, okay? That's based on the engineer's information that he's providing us, all right? For them to be able to start moving dirt or anything else and start the project, then they got to go get a stormwater protection permit before they can, before they can do that, yes. Yes.
So typically, they do them about, about the same time, you know, concurrently or close to...
Sometimes that does happen, yes.
I just didn't know if that should happen first.
It's, we have local regs and then state regs, are two separate things, so, we're just looking at local regs, I just wanted to ask or verify that they know they have to do that.
If you agree to this, then I will submit this to TDEC, and we'll get our SWIP, I mean...
Yeah, see, the thing is this, is that, let's say for instance, if they got their stormwater protection permit first, and they came before us, and we found something, we didn't approve it, and then, then they would have to turn around once they, and then come back and get us to approve, and then go back and get a permit again, so, it's, 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 the first part of the process should be to come here first and get approved, yeah. Yeah.
You don't give a bill of permit until we get our stuff?
That's correct, yes, that's part of it, yes. Any other questions? I'm looking for a motion either way.
I make the motion, yes, set.
Okay, I got a proper motion?
Second motion.
And second, no any more discussion? Not all of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. The next item is a site plan review for Dandridge Travel Center at 1217 Deep Springs Road, Dandridge by BIR Transport. Okay, yes, sir.
My name's Sonny Defoe, representing Robert Campbell and Associates, and working on revamping the old PNR truck stop, so, and I believe this is going to be a good venture, Mr. Singh is a really good man to work with, and he's got a great plan in mind, we're going to expand the parking lot considerably from what it is, the, the building itself will still be used, you know, just renovated and reused, so, we are going to change the configuration of the pumps, add, add more gas pumps out front, and relocate the easel islands, as you've seen in the drawing. The, there will also be a upper, upper, I'll call it an upper area, up over the ridge, that we use for future, you know, right now, we're just going to gravel it, you know, then maybe for whatever, but he decides to use that for, whether it be another tenant, he had talked about additional parking up there, I don't know at this point, it's just at this point, that there's that much area up there to use that we can, we can, we have,
If you remember, this was before us last month again, and basically, we rolled it because there were some questions that basically that we had in regards to this, and one of them that I had was, was this, was that as far as the water line and fire hydrants.
Yes.
And I think they reached out, I mean, I think, I'm pretty sure, they even reached out to Andy Riley, who is the fire chief of the Dandridge that would actually cover that area, and he told me that they had discussed, and I see here in the plan that basically, it looks like that we're going to upgrade the water line.
That's correct.
It looks like maybe about 412 feet, if you would be running that, and that's a six-inch line, and then, then new fire hydrants will be installed in there, so.
After talking with Shady Grove and as well as Andy Riley, I do have an email saying that he approved my locations as, as they were drawn, but Shady Grove told us that they wanted us to go back to the intersection at Sockless Road, pick up with the new six-inch line, or just, yeah, pick up the new six-inch line, come into... yeah, pick up the new six-inch line, come into the property, um, extend past the, the meter that's there, we, we plan on reusing the same meter, um, just reconnect it, and extend it a little further past the truck entrance with a blow-off valve, and the hydrants is shown.
Okay. And it looks like the hydrants basically, uh, there will be set on sort of a separate fire line probably, other than the, the, the supply line that provides the building, which is probably, it would be, uh, necessary there, so that looks good. I, I'm pretty sure we've got more than enough parking, uh, and I think we looked at that last time. The key was, is that I think when we looked at it, is how many handicap spots that were gonna be necessary, and I know we've got four in there, and I can't remember last time if he told me that there might have needed to be another one. Um, uh, there, I can't remember, he said he thought maybe they'd lift one off, but, uh.
They've still lifted off, they've lifted off again.
I couldn't, I, I couldn't remember, so.
According to what I had looked up, it was three that were required based on the, the number of parking areas in that, in that gas area.
In the gas area, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not counting the trucks.
That's what we go off of, and so if there's enough there for that, for that area right there, then, uh, I think that would be sufficient, uh, you know, uh, so, I'm trying to remember if there was. Anything else that we had in there?
The sewer.
Yeah, the, yes.
The, and, and that should be in your package as well, the sewer design, uh, I believe is complete, and they've sent it off to TDEC for approval.
Okay. You gave it to Tom?
Yeah, but I. I mean, I, I've got an extra copy over here. But, uh, yeah, it, it, so there is a current drip field there up on the ridge.
Yeah.
And they're gonna expand that to accommodate the extra sewage here, um, they have a whole obese, now, I don't show it on my drawings, but coming out of the back of the building there, towards like the fuel tank area, it, it'll come out in that area.
I think.
Yes, come around behind the fuel tanks, wrap it around the property, which is the way I think it's routed now, but, um, anyways, behind the building will be like a safety tank, dilution tank, the whole treatment system, and then it pumps up on the hill to, to the drip field, and which will be expanded.
Okay. So I think that, you know, basically, I think they, they covered the items, I think that we had questions on, uh, you know. Like I say, a lot of this is already at grade in existing, you know, based on, and it had been an existing site, so.
And, and the general slope of the parking lot is gonna lay as it is, um, the, the expansion in the back will carry roughly the same grade, have some cut in the back. The, where the gas pumps are shown, now that area will be torn up and kind of raised and somewhat leveled to accommodate that.
Okay. Questions that you have?
Did Tommy have any con- what did, what were his comments on the sewer in the previous meeting?
Tom, basically, I mean, he knew what, he knew this was an existing system that was there, uh, and, you know.
They've got a permit, I think, for July, the middle of July or something, but they know they gotta redo that.
Yes.
So, uh, that's the key, since they're gonna expand the system, that's where it goes, that would really be the, the new part that he would come in on, and, like I say, it had to be sent to TDEC, uh, for approval, sometimes, sometimes they, you know, sometimes they like for us to, to look at things to a certain extent, but on that, probably not, but anyway, you know, yeah, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't have an opportunity to talk to Tom about that, and since he's not at the meeting tonight, but, uh, I mean, I feel comfortable with what they got to have a system there, if they wanna expand and have a bigger business, then they're gonna have to have the extra right there, so.
Which this is talking about soon expansion, right?
Yes, yes, that sewer plan should address the expansion, and like I say, I mean, I didn't have anything to do with it as providing it, but, uh, I mean, yes, it does consider, 'cause we, I think we got two hundred and twenty truck parking spaces, yes, it's, it does. Should put expansion.
Anything else?
I'm going to approve contingent on the approval on environmental.
Expansion, okay. Approval, so I got a proper motion to approve the site plan based upon, uh, the new expansion, the environmental department approving that, uh, so, do I have a second?
Second.
And second, motion and second, any other discussion, everybody understand what the motion is? Okay, all those favor aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, so, you'll probably need to.
You, Tom, you have.
Yes. I'll see if I've got the permit, if, if, I, I know it's close to being done, but wherever it's at, when it is, I'll.
Yeah, okay.
So the next item C is, has been rolled to the next meeting, so that leads us into item D.
By the request.
Yes.
By the attorney.
By the attorney, okay.
All right, so the next one is discussion of the land use plan, possible rezoning of Jefferson County town, and time permitting, and, uh, so, we have some maps, and if we're, and technically work things out or whatever, if we can get these to where we can see them on a screen, maybe that'll help us. And the reason we have these maps, these are, these are the current zoning maps for the county. And this one here, this map. That came from the property sisters office, which shows properties that are being used for residential, uh, that are vacant, that are being used for commercial, that are being used for in, industry, and, you know, over there's the legend as far as it goes. See here, it will show the vacant land and, uh, semi-public, public use, schools, road railways, and, uh, those types of things are on here, so these sort of go hand in hand a little bit with what we have here on, that we have property zone, because if you remember through the years, what we've come across was this, is that we had properties that were commercial in use, but they never got zoned commercial through zoning, okay? But that, but they're u- they're being used as commercial use, and you, you know, you may have had a store here, you may have had a business here, so the county has picked them up as being, as a business, as being commercial or industry or whatever, but we, it may not show up that way on our zoning maps. So, as we go through this process, what I like for us to be able to do is to address those parcels as what they are now, okay? And that be one of the things that gets changed when, when we come through to try to do, uh, to look at, at the zone for the county. So, the maps you have tonight are basically the north part of the county.
Yeah, it's, uh.
Which probably follows.
I stopped tonight, it's just one through twenty of our hundred and six tax maps.
So.
And that's the only thing I have, this is ninety-eight.
So, but if you look through those right there.
Yeah.
Okay, and you were saying that, how much would you say this is A1, and how much is commercial and R1?
Well.
Can you tell?
Number one, Mary, we had.
Am I making noise? So, if you look at this area, which is should be basically, I think. Right here, is where we're looking at, right there, and so, we've got some, uh, I don't know if that's a mobile home park or mobile home on there, but it's what it looks like, which I never realized that that was even out there.
So, the use is what we, was what is on the tax code.
What's on here, yes, that's correct.
That's the tax map. The tax map.
Yeah, this, you know, this is only, this is the tax map, but this is what, this is the actual use that's being used right there, so he's got it up on the screen, if we can scroll it down just a little bit there, if we're. Is that gonna work?
Yeah, I don't know. Give me a second.
Okay.
Not taking a minute to figure that. Oh, yeah, there you go, go the other way.
Can I go north?
Go, yeah, scroll down. Scroll left.
Scroll up.
Yeah, scroll up.
Keep going.
And now then, we need to go.
To the right.
Yeah.
Need to go west, yeah.
That's it. Okay.
Yeah, it's at the top left.
Yeah, the first page is gonna be that thumb that's sticking up.
Right. And if you look at, at the parcels that we have here, and what we've got over here, a- as to what's there, that, that's gonna tell you some things that we probably never realized before. That there are things that are happening out in the county that have been had going on for a long time, per se, from a zoning standpoint, that even though they may be allowed use in A1, they're actually a commercial use.
We've got too much stuff in A1.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so, you know, and that's not to say that, that they're, they're, that what's there is not correct, but my thing is this, is if it's be- if it's being taxed as commercial out there as far as it goes, why would it not be zoned commercial? That, that's my, that's my, my reason, so, 'cause it, it exists, it, it's there already, we didn't create it, it was created.
No.
You know, from, from that standpoint, it, it existed there.
I'm not seeing a commercial on this.
No, I'm just saying, but, I'm just saying in general.
I thought we were talking about this specifically.
No, no, I don't think there's, I, you know, 'cause if you look here at, at the color, at, at, at the legend that's on there, basically, we've got, uh, some mobile homes, and then everything else is basically gonna be agriculture, and then we also have.
What's, what's the legend on commercial, what color?
Commercial will be, uh, uh, sort of a pink color.
Dark purple, light industrial, light purple, heavy industrial.
It's probably gonna be also a red.
It's red industrial.
It's general commercial, that's what it is, I'm pretty sure that's what it is, so, uh, you know, you're yellow, if you look, it's just single-family residential. And so, which tells you that if it is yellow, that means there's a house on it, if it's the dotted green, that means it's vacant.
Purple, the light industrial and heavy.
Yes.
Like a pinkish hue.
So, based on what you see right there, okay, for that, for that area right there, do you see anything that would need to be changed on that map? That, that work, that area right in there?
I don't have a legend, so.
Okay.
We got, we, we need, we need a legend, so we can tell.
Look at the tax map that I passed out, and that's, that's easier to tell to me, that's all A1 there.
Yeah, I know that, but he's looking at, this is the zoning, what he's looking at is the land use.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
We need a cop- what we need is a copy of the legend.
We're supposed to share it.
We need a copy of the paper that's got the legend on it, so we can sit here and look at that map.
Need to see five hours.
With all the money you've got in your budget.
I just will not give me a dime, John D.
You're just.
It's Cherokee Lake, you're out, you're out back of the river.
You, you're, you're out good, I mean, Good Hope River Road, that's, that's north of, uh, uh, Jefferson City, uh, on the river, so the other side is gonna be Granger County there.
I went there too, filled in store rooms.
That area right there.
Low Cherokee Dam, going along the river.
If you had, if you had a copy of this map, you, it would have all the road names on it, it would be easier if you, to make that determination, uh, so. The question I've got is, is that if you look at the majority of that, it's either vacant or single-family residential, uh, or that it's got manufactured homes on it, uh, or actually mobile homes.
Well, it's got red on it, so it's commercial?
I, I don't know where.
Right there. I can see red right there, out towards the.
Yeah, but that's, that's not, that's not on this first map, I don't think.
I don't think that's red. Yeah, that's probably not on the map one.
What's all of the green by the lake?
That's TVA.
Cherokee Dam.
Public use, right. Okay.
And that red, more than likely would be the storage.
That's the storage buildings beside the damn gut.
I don't think that's red up there.
But if you, if you, the thing is, is if, if you look at that there.
It's got to be red, you're, you're colorblind. Right beside the green.
I'm talking about that top.
That's mobile homes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a map you're looking at right now.
Mobile homes, the yellow's single-family residential housing, and then the, the white, the brown dots is timber, that's just timber area right in here, they have.
That there's on the way.
And so, all the little, this right here is Goodwill Hope Church Road, I've been on that road, and I've been on this.
That's old Hotson place right there, that's the one that Ron Hotson sold to that old boy down there that makes the tubes for CT scanners or something, that's, that's it right there.
That's, that's. Yeah, so, uh, so do you see anything? Do you see anything in there that, based on that, that you think that we should change? Looking at this map, up there, what's there, and here, do you see anything that needs to be changed?
Point of clarification.
Okay.
What are, are you wanting to go page by page and start rezoning?
It's the only way we've got to look at it, is page by page, we don't have a.
Yeah, would we not be better off to wait to hear back from the long-range planning first? I feel like we're getting, getting out ahead here.
That's gonna be tw- uh, what, twelve eight months?
I don't.
Could Katie come up?
But you're not gonna rezon properly, you're gonna come up with a plan.
I can.
Okay, you're gonna come up with a plan, I'm looking at, at the way the property's actually zoned right now, is what I'm looking at.
Or not zoned.
Or not zoned, is where it goes, yes.
Can I say something to the committee just real quick, so they know what, so the, the Long Range Planning Committee just sent to full commission a vote to get, to pay a company to do a long, um, community input survey, and it passed, so IBI is the company, and they're gonna go out, there'll be a steering committee, um, the Long Range Planning Committee will meet next week probably, and then we'll identify who's gonna be on the steering committee, they'll determine what kind of questions, images are sent out, they'll do five, um, town hall type meetings where people can go attend, they'll use, it's called QR codes, where, so the goal is to get as much input from the community as possible to help with the vision, to give input back to your committee and the Long Range Planning Committee to help with the land. to help with the land use plan and where the county's, um, sees itself where we wanna go. And it'll have commer, it'll identify people as business owners, commercial, are you agriculture? And then you'll put in your zip code, and then it'll take you to different questions. So you'll be able to track and trend the people in the community and what the results are. So that's what we're working on, and they think the results will get back. Well, originally, we were told September, but it might push to October, 'cause we're, um, delayed a couple weeks, so.
So, well, here's my question. So, what will those results look like? And I'm saying, how, in other words, when they give us the feedback, how is that gonna look?
Well, I don't know, it'll depend on what the citizens of the community say and...
I, I understand that you're gonna take the comments and everything else, as far as that goes, okay. But how does that relate to what the, how the county is currently zoned? That's my question.
Appropriate places for commercial use, perhaps, or residential or agriculture?
Yeah, which is what I'm, I'm trying to go through now, to see here, what's, what's in the county in comparison to what our zoning maps are, are stating. And so, my, I guess, 'cause my question is this, is that eventually, we're gonna have to come to determination, even after the study is over, as far as that goes, the people are gonna say, this is what we want, okay? But then, we know what they're, they say we want, but what do we know what we have? So, that's what I'm looking at, is this, is that I wanna go through here, and I wanna identify what we have, per se, uh, to, to that extent, because within, somebody asked me a question, says, well, what do you think about this area right here? This is, this is where, one of the questions come back through, as far as that goes. And they say, well, this is what we, this is what we would like to have there. And then we're gonna vote and look and says, well, we have other things besides that. So, what do we say? You don't get to do the other things that are already existing, how's that gonna work? In other words, if people says, all we want is farmland right here, well, you've got, you've got single-family housing. Does, does that, does that not work? Are we gonna have to grandfather that in as, as part of it? That's what I'm, that's, that's what I wanna, I wanna know what I've got in relation to what I have on the zoning map. They can come back and, and make the recommendations and says, this is the direction that we want the county to go. And we can go that way. But all I wanna know is, is that the people that already have what they have there, what, what do we do with them?
So, is, I just wanna make sure I understand. So what we're talking about right now would be just to go through and compare the tax map to our zoning map?
Because, because this... Because this has not been, this is from nineteen ninety-eight.
Yes.
And, and what I'm looking at is, is I wanna see what's happened since nineteen ninety-eight, actually, on the pro, on the ground, as far as it goes, in comparison to what we have on our maps. Like, I think we're gonna be surprised.
You wanna know what's out there in the community?
That's why I'm saying, in relation...
I, I took it to mean that he was wanting to start rezoning, I'm fine with looking at it.
Well, there, there may become a time when, basically, we look right here, then we, we may do some rezoning. We may request for some rezoning.
More specifically tonight?
No, 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 no.
That's where I was, okay.
We're, we're long ways from that, so.
I think what you're trying to do is identify, are there patterns of different types of whatever, commercial, industrial? Like, are there patterns in our county already where you would think you're gonna put like things together? And then like, the survey's gonna say, like, you'll be able to take even areas of what, maybe Dandridge has all retirees, you know, I don't know. And maybe you get a different feel back from this community, but you can track and trend even the communities, what they're interested in from our community survey. And then you merge the two somehow.
Okay.
Right?
And, and I'm gonna give you an example here. And if we just look at, at this whole sort of map down through here, as far as it goes, and you were looking here at this, and you're saying, oh, man, look at, look at all these houses in here, and look at all this property down through here. So, what does that tell you then about this area? People are attracted to the river, okay? And when they are attracted to the river, when it's subdivided and sold or whatever, what do you think they, what they want? They want, you think they're gonna try to get as many lots as they can for that many more people to live on the river? Would you think that would be the case? Okay? 'Cause it's probably the highest and best use, and that's gonna generate, the property owner who may be, or develop with the most money. All right, so, that's fine, okay, from that standpoint. But, from us on a planning standpoint, and we're looking out here and we're saying, oh, that river frontage is really nice and everything else, but you know what? There's not a road to get out there to it. And I guarantee you, this track right here is a beautiful track and everything else, but there's not a road that you can get to that out there, is where that goes. So, what we're saying is, is that you know what? That might just stay the way it is forever. You know, I'm just saying, that, that there's examples here, that some of this is gonna take a lot of infrastructure to make it work. Is it desirable? Yeah, 'cause we can see that there, we know that's there, as far as that goes. So, but is it, is it gonna come out that way? Will it end up that way? First of all, first...
That place going back into there, it ain't fit for a genuine drag sled.
I've been down it, I know it.
A what? A genuine drag sled. Oh, okay.
No, it's just, it's just a big, beautiful piece of property when you get out there, and that's, that's all of everybody.
Man, there's one house right in the middle of it.
Yeah.
How's he get out there?
He goes up that path, it's a path. It is a path, it is not a road, Jigger, it is a path.
No ferry?
No ferry. It's a pass back through there, I'm telling you.
But, but I...
How up to date is, is that?
This, this came from the tax assessor, they update this to the state, uh, probably, probably at least.
I don't know how up to date it is.
It's probably about a month, probably.
Oh. They've been building like crazy up there.
I, I, I'm saying, I, you know, uh, from that standpoint, it's, it's there.
So, but this is ninety-eight, this is twenty-three?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And we have updated all those tax maps.
To a certain extent.
Yeah, we, we updated everything we've rezoned since ninety-eight, I don't know.
But...
But not on, yeah, on that, we had...
This is...
Yeah, it's updated as far as our rezonings.
Our rezonings. But what it doesn't represent is everything that's on here that it is now.
You see, nothing on that first page has ever been around.
Yeah.
The problem is not color coded either. Nothing here has ever been rezoned, so there's no change there.
I can't believe it. All the money that y'all have?
No money.
Well...
I need something braille or something.
I'm just saying that when we look at...
It's wasteful, you're wasteful's what you are.
When we look at some of these things that are here, and we see how, how, how development and everything is, is coming, and where people are attracted to, as far as that goes, uh...
So, let me ask you a question, Mr. Terry.
What I don't wanna do is ever be able to, because people would like to come there and they'd like to live there. If I, if I, could, could I zone them out from something than doing that? That's not my intention. But when we talk about the A1 zone and everything that's in it, as far as it goes, we may want to, I think that we're probably gonna get to the point where we're gonna eliminate some things out of A1, and we might add some things to A1.
When you say eliminate, do you mean properties, or do you mean the things that are allowed in A1?
The things that are allowed.
Yeah.
Okay. So, but in doing that, in here, we got, this is A1. And if we come in here and we say, you know what, we need to eliminate this out of A1, but what if there's something already there, that's there? In my opinion, that, that's, that's established, and it's saying that it's okay because it's been there. And so I'm, you know, I don't know, I wouldn't have any qualms about more of that coming there, because it's already, some, there's already some of it there, uh, to a certain extent. Uh, we, you know...
I was just confused, 'cause the way I read it, I thought we were talking about starting to just rezone pieces, and I think it would be smart to wait to hear back from long range.
This, this is just basically to look at where zoning, when, when we did zoning in ninety-eight, what has transpired, and this is twenty-three, and this is where we're at.
Okay.
How it relates to these maps right here. And when we make a decision, when we come in here and we say, okay, you know what? We, we've had fourteen new single-family houses that's, is going into the area right here. Or we've had, uh, some areas here that was once, point in time, two hundred and thirty-five acres, and now it's been split up into five and ten acre tracts. Is that the demand, is that what people want? Uh, or was it the infrastructure that's the only thing that allowed that to, to occur? All right, which it was, it, it's not a bad thing. But what I'm saying is, is this, is that there are gonna be some parcels in here, as far as that goes, that are gonna sort of stick out, and we're gonna say, how in the world would that ever happen? Well, it happened because this is what it was in ninety-eight. And we're saying, okay, so it exists, so why couldn't some more of the same thing exist there as well? That's, you remember, when the lady came and spoke about the rezoning on ninety-two? Okay. The thing is this, is that we didn't really set a precedent when, when we rezoned that property, because there's commercial properties all up and down ninety-two, down through there. So, you know, there wasn't, there wasn't a new precedent set there. There was already existing commercial properties down ninety-two, which, a, as, as on planning, that's the way we looked at it. So, my thing is, i- if I have, say, an R1 property out here, that's outside the growth boundary or whatever, in that area, and I'm saying, okay, so I've got some R1 here, but why would I not want more R1, if I've got some else? Uh, but then again, we may say, you know what? The infrastructure here won't, won't handle that, handle it.
Right.
So, that, that's, that, that was my reasoning behind this right here. 'Cause I felt like this was not up to date with what's going on in the county. And I think that, and I think what you're gonna find is, is there's gonna be trends when you look at certain areas, that is this, and, and 'cause zoning has always been one thing, we've always looked at, we weren't any high density to go into the growth boundaries of, of the city, okay? But I found that you can't hurt people. If they wanna live out here on a one-acre lot or a half-acre lot, out here on the lake, or on the river, or wherever, that's what they want. You, we just can't say, oh, no, you can't, we're not gonna let you do that, you go there, that's not, that's not what they want. So, part of this thing is gonna be this, when this IBI thing comes in there. Do you not think that there's gonna be somebody that's gonna come up and say, you know what? I like this area over here, and, but I wanna be able to get a half-acre lot and build me a house on it? Is that gonna be something that we're gonna look at and say, you're, you're in the minority, and we're not gonna do that? I don't know. But he, he voiced his opinion, eh, eh, from that standpoint, and when we were to look at that, and we would say, okay, this is what the guy wants, and we looked there and said, you know what? We've got nine, ten, twelve other people just like him that have already done that. Have already done it. And, and so, are we gonna say, we don't, we don't feel comfortable with that anymore? I, I don't, that, that's, that's where, all I know is, I just wanna know where we're at in relation to what's built in the county with what's on our, on our maps. I, and here's the thing, is, is, is... See if we can find the map, there's probably are more. Next one over, let's see. If you go to, uh, say about the third, or one, two, three, page four over here, okay? And you see the tracks there on Buck Haller Road, but look at the size of the tracks that were in there. They're, they're not small lots, as far as it goes, but we got them zoned A1. So they go anywhere from about, you know, some of the big tracks. Now, and the reason I say that is this. So what happens then, say if you come here in parcel four point oh-three, there's five point five eight acres. And a guy comes in here and he says, you know what? I will subdivide that, and, as far as that goes, and to, to do that, and I wanna come in here and I wanna ask for R1 zones. So, and he's gonna say, you rezoned all this right over here, and the very same thing right over here to R1, so why can't I get to R1? When I wanna subdivide that little track. And so what happens, the next guy may come down and he says, I wanna do the same thing. So is it something that, you know, and it may be that when you look at Buck Haller Road, it could be that that road is, is what's limited that from being covered up, smaller tracks. But sometime in the future, that road could be brought up to, to a better standard, as far as that goes. In which case then, uh, off of that, in which case then, those people, to me, would have the right to ask for, uh, to be rezoned to R1, even though they may not get it. But, but then we would be hard pressed because we're saying, well, did we not give all these people down here R1? So, that's my question, what would be the difference between that? And all I'm saying is, is if, if, when I have, when I have zoning in here, as far as that goes, and we change the designation to a certain extent, and my thing is this, is that when it goes to an R1 zone, we may have new, it may not even be called A1. We may call it something else. We may come some new designations, as far as that goes. You know, we may say that R1, a- as far as that goes, we may say, uh, thirty thousand square foot be your minimum lot size. Because now then, what we have in place is to protect those people, is that anytime any lot comes before us, we have standards that says, you gotta provide them a building site, okay? So what would be wrong with them, if that soil is good, and that land lay's good, to go with, to make them just only come up with maybe, say, a half-acre or a three-quarter acre lot instead of a full-acre lot, and subdivide and put a house on it? Right now, we don't, we don't have any recourse to do this.
So would we be better to discuss the, like, A1, for instance, I think is probably one of the most loosely zoned?
That's, that's because it covers everything, that's where a majority of everything is.
Yeah.
Uh, you know...
Legally, somebody could go in there and put a junkyard in A1, right?
They could.
No.
No, not a junkyard.
No, not a junkyard.
Not a junkyard, if they could.
You mean they could junk it up?
No. I thought junkyards were allowed in A1.
A1, A1.
A1?
Yeah. But what I'm saying is, is, is that there's probably some other things that could go in there. When you look at everything, you go in there. The big thing, the big thing is this, is when you look at what's allowed to go in there, okay?
Really?
All right, the neighborhood sometimes has a certain expectation that when something goes in there, that they have a vision that when it's finished, what it should look like, okay? Which is basically some sort of architectural control, which we don't have, all right? So if we come in here and we say, a commercial store can go in there, well, if they build, just go out there and put, put a metal building up and everything else, that would probably, that would meet, it would meet guidelines. But the next guy may come in there, and he may put a beautiful storefront and whatever, this, that, whatever. So, what we run into is, is that the community has a certain expectation that when the finished product is gonna be in there, that it's gonna look a certain way, uh, as far as it goes. But that doesn't always look that way. So then what happens is, it comes back and it says, oh, that was a zoning issue, you should've never let him build that 'cause of the way it looks. That had nothing to do with, from our standpoint. It was the use, uh, per se. So the perception they, they have is, is that you've ruined our neighborhood, you looked what you let them build. Well, we let them build what zoning said they could build, all right? But we don't have any control over how it looks once it's built. All right, so, that's why, that's why sometimes I'm thinking that, because A1 is what it is, that I would prefer maybe going to something that, that's more residential friendly. And then, go from there.
Like a R1, R2, or...
I, I'm just saying, you know, or, or this, let's say, for instance, there's, there's nothing wrong with leaving some properties agricultural, okay? There's not. And, and, and here's the thing, even if we zoned them, even, e- if they are agricultural, and even if we zoned them R1, that doesn't really change anything, they're still grandfathered in. We could put in there in an R1 zone, but you can still do agriculture. But we may not say in an R1 zone that you can, uh, uh, build a grocery store, or put in a convenience store in an R1 zone. Uh, per se. But even though, when we get through this, we may find out that, you know what? There's an old store right there, it's been there since, uh, eighteen seventy, as far as it goes, and that was, that was the store, and it, and it still, you know, and I'm not saying it's the case, but there will be some things like that that we're gonna come across. Uh, because I don't think, there again, I don't think this reflects... Uh, because I don't think, there again, I don't think this reflects what's actually out there on the ground. And, and, and the reason being was, is that because when this was done, nobody actually went out there and looked at parcel by parcel by parcel and said, this is what's on there.
I have no idea. I've come here like, I don't know how they do it.
So, how do you enforce something?
Such as?
Like if somebody put a junkyard on a farm?
Yeah. Who writes off, who writes the check?
No, we do. I mean, you don't, we don't have any junkyards since ninety-eight.
I've got fifteen junk cars down the road from there.
They'll run, they're gonna fix them up.
Yeah, sure.
You can have, and I only mock to tell you, but you can have five on each parcel that you have.
Five? What constitutes a junkyard? Fifteen?
No, no, I.
Fourteen twenty-one George Street.
So, I'm gonna take you, I'm gonna tell you what, I, I'm gonna tell you what's gonna be some feedback from, to IBI. And this is where it's gonna come. Because I get it all the time, all the time, for this. My neighbor's playing noise, is there an ordinance in the county to turn here and make them turn the noise down? I said, no, no, don't have that. Or it said, it says, my neighbor, he doesn't mow his yard. And he says, it's up there high and the rats and everything around through here. Said, who can come out here and make him mow his grass? Well, nobody can. I said, because we don't have anything in there. And those are gonna be some, I guarantee you, those are gonna be some of the things that are gonna be, the people are gonna throw out there. And it's gonna be thrown off on their neighbors because of the way that they have. All right? So, the question is, is when that comes down and no, and that feedback comes in on the report, if it comes in there, then is, uh, because that's not gonna be a zoning issue. It won't. It'll be an enforcement issue. And so, the question is, will the county, you think, step in at that point in time and create things to, to stop those very issues?
And you're really talking about a dirty law, which they've been talking about for fifteen years and it's never going over.
That's, obviously, addressing, she, there's an issue right there for what he's talking about.
Make them buy a wheel tax for each one of those vehicles.
They don't have to tag them by state law unless they're driving them.
So, those are, I, I know those are gonna, some, be some of the questions that people are gonna have. Like, because they call all the time about those, about those very issues.
Yeah, I get them. On my old lot.
They're not so much worried about the neighbor that puts in something commercial if it's nice, neat and clean. They're worried about the guy that puts something in that's legal at that point in time and it ends up being a nice order nuisance to them.
If he sells a car part off of one of those junk, doesn't he have to charge sale tax?
Well, yeah, but that's, that's.
How you catch them?
Well, I, I'm just saying that those are the issues. Those are some, the phone calls I get, i- it's not somebody asking me, hey, can, can I do this and this, that, whatever. It's always a complaint about their neighbor. And what their neighbor's doing and why the county doesn't do anything about it. And I think it has to do with zoning.
Yeah.
Uh, as far as it goes. And they're saying, why can't you come out here and do something about this for zoning? I said, it's not a zoning issue. And I said, there's nothing in guidelines. Kayden?
I have two questions from somebody in the crowd. So, the first one is, how does zoning affect property rights of current owners?
How does zoning affect prop- property rights of current owners? All right, so, it depends on what your property's on, is, is what you're allowed to live in that zone.
It restricts you to certain uses, uh, certain size of buildings, setbacks, certain uses, uh.
But your taxes don't increase because of zoning?
Taxes is based on use of whatever the property is. Doesn't matter what it's on.
Based on value of the improvements.
It's based on use.
The use of the land, commercial, residential, district.
So, that's, that is the, for, as a property owner, on your own property, you're, you're limited to what that zone says that you can do.
Unless it's in a subdivision with restrictions.
Right, but the zoning doesn't cover that.
Okay, here's the second question. Does changing from agriculture to commercial zoning trigger any kind of eminent domain or restriction on current owners?
Has nothing to do with it.
No, no. It changes what they can do in the future. Has nothing to do with eminent domain. Eminent domain can be used on any property of any zone if the government chooses to do that. But if, changing from one zone to the next, this affects future possibilities for, for the use of that land.
But to address that a little bit further, because I'm seeing this come through the General Assembly of State Tennessee in regard to zoning. Okay? Because some people are saying, you have my property zoned, this is zoned. And I wanna do something else besides what's in this zone. And I've come before you and I asked you to rezone my property, but you refused to do so. So, you're not allowing me my full rights to my property because I could do other things, but you won't allow me to do them. And so, the question was, is that a taking at that point in time? Because you have restricted them in the use of their land, which the law says you can to a certain extent. But where you have to be careful is, is that, so, you tell this guy no. And then you come over here and the next guy comes and asks you the same thing, and you tell him yes. And so, then this guy's gonna come back and says, I'm here, I'm a taxpayer in Jefferson County. Why is it you let this guy over here do this, but you're not gonna let me do this? I said, so basically, they can look at it and say, you're taking my land, you're taking away some of my rights that I don't have that other, other perfectly, people in Jefferson County were in the same boat was, that, that you did take away the rights.
If you can't restrict one person's land, you can't restrict anybody's land.
I know.
So, your neighbor can put a hog farm, adult bookstore, uh, any junkyard, mobile home park. If you can't restrict, you know, you, you have to be able to restrict the use of land, not zoning. But this is not gonna pass, though, that, there's no way. Even if it does, it violates the U.S. Constitution and federal law, there's no way that it would ever pass, so.
Well, I, I'm just saying that there are people out there that feel like that, uh, you know, that, that, that their rights and their property, per se. Because if they didn't have a say in how their property was originally zoned, and they say, this is what I wanna do, but you're not gonna let me do it because you said that you zoned my property.
It's just like any other law enforcement. You wanna be able to drive, you know, uh, drive totally drunk out of your mind, you know? Because then your neighbor's gonna be able to do that, too. So, it actually helps everybody to say, no, you can't do that. So, but it restricts your freedom a little bit, because you can't drive drunk, but.
But if they build a house in A-one, can you have your hog farm next?
Yes.
If it's A-one?
In A-one, A-one, yes, yeah, in that zone. Not in R-one, not in R-one.
Sort of like, uh, Barbara Road Buffalo.
No.
A-one's agricultural, so, yeah, you can't have.
Right, right up to the, you don't have any setbacks or anything, right?
That hog can.
Not a hog farm.
So, if we rezoned A-one to R-one and somebody had a farm on that and wanted to continue doing agriculture, wouldn't that restrict them?
No.
It would be grandfathered in until such time as they seize.
Until they sell it?
Um, if they sell.
Until they, until they determine to change the use.
Right, for a period of time. If it goes, if they stop using it as a hog farm for six months or a year, depends on the zoning orders, then it has to conform to the new zone. Six months, then it has to conform to the new zone. So, they have to keep it in operation. As long as they keep it in operation, they can keep it as.
Well, we've been pretty.
You can't restrict that.
The last two or three years, we've not rezoned anything else.
You, you can't do that. I, I hate to argue with you, but you're right.
On agriculture, yeah, yeah.
There's, there's other laws that pertain to agriculture that are superseding.
Superseding us.
Right, yeah. Same thing for solar living or, you know, disabled fair housing stuff like that. You can't, you can't treat them differently than a single family, a typical family, basically. But that's a whole nother story, so.
But we're talking hog farms.
Yeah, hog farms, everyone wants a hog farm.
There ain't many hog farms around anymore, so I wouldn't worry about it.
Well.
Well, I raised a couple of hogs at once.
Okay, so, here's the question.
I got a question before we get down here. Hang on just a second. How do we reconcile this map with this one? How do we get what is there?
And to transfer over to here?
To transfer over here so we can take a look and see. Going through here doesn't do any good. But how, we gotta go through parcel by parcel, page by page. How do we get what the use is overlaid onto?
Yes.
That? Or what the zone is overlaid onto that? Because David talked about, at the last meeting, he talked about overlaying those two.
You probably could somehow.
To, together with.
See, that's why I knew that we were gonna be behind the eight ball because I was hoping that that was gonna help us in the center.
But, but if we had, if we had the map of what the zone is now.
Yeah.
And what the use is now. That would be helpful.
Yeah.
Having this here is.
In quadrants, we'd probably do like, I don't know how many different maps.
Well, there's a hundred and three. Tax maps.
Are you talking about doing like?
How?
Breaking up the eight sections?
Is this the whole county?
Yeah. And that's all we need, is the overlay and break the thing up into the maps. Because of what the use is.
We have to zoom in.
See, here's the thing, this is a PDF, okay? And I looked at it, I thought that you could break it down into sections as far as that goes and print that out, where it could be an overlay to where.
Yeah, fold it over.
You could take it and you just take a section and, and, and put it, we could actually put two or three of these maps together and lay it on there and you cover a big section.
Exactly.
And that's what I, that's what I was expecting.
There's gotta be somebody at the state.
Well, I was co- I, David, David was looking at it, and that's what he was gonna, that's what he was gonna provide us.
And that, that would be beneficial.
We've got a great map person. If it can be done, she will do it. So, we'll see.
That's what we need.
There's ain't no easy task to do that.
No, I understand that, but that's what we need, is we need the, we need what's zoned.
Yeah.
Overlaid onto what it is.
What it's taxed as.
What's a tax, what it's taxed as.
I'd like to zoom in.
And then we can figure out, do we need to make some corrective action on what it is already there? If it's zoned A-one and it's used as commercial, we need to know that. Or if it's on, you know, the R-one, the R-one basically, you know, unless there's a s- super big subdivision or something. The R-one and the A-one, that's gonna be kind of a war share because you're not gonna be able to tell them, you can't go there for a house and a lot. You can't, you, you buy acre ground or five acres ground, you don't be able to do that. But this, the industrial, the commercial, those kinda uses overlaid on there, over the top of what it is, will, that will give us how much we have to take corrective action about.
Yeah. See, I had a, I can't get to pull up, I had a printout that came out on the Excel spreadsheet that gave me this here in every parcel. And told me what the color was for. So, I could've took that spreadsheet and I could've put here and I could've looked this map, and I could've gone to every parcel in here off that spreadsheet and told you exactly what was on there. And I got that through the state. And then, but now I can't get, I can't get to come back. I don't know what happened. But that, that's, that's the way I was gonna address it. I, I, I could've taken, this, this, we could've taken four of these maps right here and I could've laid that spreadsheet out there and we could've gone through every one of these parcels right here. And it'd been right there and it said.
That's what we need.
Everything was there. But I can't, I couldn't get that to come back. I couldn't get that, uh.
So, it's dangerous to use that email backup.
So, but that, I, I knew that was, and what I was gonna do was, everybody would've had a copy. And, and, and we went through this then, you, we could've looked in here and said, okay, this is, this is where we're at. And we could've walked them in, we could've gone down there and said, oh, yeah, that house right there, that's, yeah, okay, that was a house. Or, commercial, whatever, it would've been there on the spreadsheet. If I could figure out how to do that, that would.
Well, maybe his, back in the department down there, uh, can figure something out.
Get, can you find out what he had? Or what he got a hold of to get your mapping person to do that?
Yeah, this, I can never get this. Uh, and then, she's got the zoning, I believe she's got, well, who does rezonings? Who changes the map?
We do.
We do, and I said, I mean, David should change, I mean, he, I sent them to him.
But I.
I don't know.
Maintain the zoning. Emily doesn't work with you on rezoning?
She takes magic.
Yeah, I don't know what it is. I mean, we've done it twenty-five years.
Okay. Huh, all right, well, I'm gonna have to look into that one.
Yeah, David was going to twenty-five years ago.
Okay.
I don't know if there was, but, yeah, I, I, there's some problem that we, they couldn't do it.
It's a lot more difficult with the county.
It is, yeah.
Because you got such a bigger land mass. A municipality is a much smaller, you know, maybe fifty square miles or twenty or, you know, this, we're talking.
Yeah.
I don't know how many square miles this is, but it's a lot bigger, so, just the amount of data and then.
We'll start with the, start with the municipalities and work out.
We can do that.
Start with municipalities.
We're not actually doing the municipalities, all right?
No.
County.
But we'll do the growth boundaries.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we certainly can, we'll see. I'll talk to Emily about it and she, if, if it can be done, she can do it. She's about as good as, as it gets, so.
We, we need to know that on board, don't we?
All right.
So, would we, would it be best to get those maps before we?
Oh, I'm not trying to stop discussion, I'm just saying, those, those are gonna be critical in what we do.
Yeah, we can't.
Go through this one, piece by piece, right?
Timber, timber tracks.
Timber tracks, right.
Okay. They got this in greenbelt on timber.
But that's all I had to give you then, to look at.
Yeah, I mean, we gotta start somewhere. There is a slush fund in that apartment. It is, it, I mean, it's just, it's, it's sad.
Is that where all the money's been going? There's a hole somewhere.
So, I got another.
Where it runs out of the bucket.
I, I got another question that has to do with subdivided land. So, if you look at all these parcels here that are sort of green or whatever, what that tells me is, is that all those parcels that are basically are, are probably on greenbelt. All right? So, or they're in, they're in, some of them are timber, all right? So, the question is this. If you have a piece of property that was on greenbelt and you wanted to subdivide that property. Would it be something to say that, oh, you were on greenbelt, or you subdivided the property, that five acre tracts is what you would do? And that, and if you wanted to go more than that, that you would take your property off of greenbelt? For a certain time, it would give us a notice that, hey, I'm wanting to go do something else with my property besides that, as far as that goes. And at which that point in time, they would submit that to us and, or a rezoning to whatever they wanted it to?
It's all greenbelt, A-one property is it?
Yes.
Has to be.
By definition.
Yeah.
Well, the problem with that is, you may not know that. I may die before I get home.
I know that.
And my heirs may not know that they wanna do, have to go through that. I mean, that, that's a.
That is a legitimate thing, and I've thought about that.
That's a thing to me that would be unhandy.
Okay, but he, but here's the thing. So, if you were to come to us with that kinda hardship, uh, to, for the planning commission, and we could look at that, and you say, this is what I need to do. Then they could make that recommendation to county commission to, to, to rezonate under that hardship. That's, but here's the thing, is this, and, and here's where I see it coming, where it's gonna happen. All right, so, you've got two heirs, and they don't even live here. And they're gonna look at that, they have that land, and they're saying, you know what? We wanna subdivide this land because we realize that somebody that's gonna buy it from us wants it to be that way because they wanna do something else with it besides agriculture. Uh, and everything else. And if you say no to that, have you really cost them a tremendous amount of money? All right? Because here's what's gonna, here, because here's been the trend, and, and I see this, and, and this is my worst fear, is this. Is that that property right there very well could be something that would be a nice development, all right? To a certain extent. But the trend has been lately, is that people are so against anything sort of being rezoned and everything else. So, would somebody say, you know what? I don't want another residential development there, so I don't want you to change that zoning for them, and I want you to make them stay the, exactly the way it is. Which is basically then hurts them monetarily, does it not?
Yeah.
It does.
Uh, you can't penalize them for that. I mean, might be.
Well, I understand what you're saying there, but in a way, we penalize them to a certain extent anyway, do we not?
How so?
Because depending on what zone they're in, determines basically what size lot that they can actually get, could get out of it, okay? So, if we had five acre tracts, and that was the minimum that you could go to, then everybody that comes in there would have to say, I wanna buy a five acre tract. But probably what you're gonna. But probably what you're gonna say is, okay, so, they're gonna say, alright, I'm gonna give you six thousand dollars an acre for that five acre track. But if you had it down into say an acre or seven and three quarters of an acre track, and a guy comes in and he says, I'll give you thirty thousand dollars for that building lot. There's a big, there's a big difference, big, big difference there.
Yeah, but here.
And it can, and it can affect, you know, because here's the thing is, they, those heirs, they don't care about agriculture anymore. They're, what they're looking for is, at that point in time, is to sell and get the most money they can out of it. The, the key would, to me would be is this, is if they took it, i- if you took it out of greenbelt, as far as that goes, uh, to a certain extent, you know, I don't know.
Well, when you take it out of greenbelt, you gotta pay a rollback tax anyway.
You do.
But here's, here's the problem is, by definition, if you're doing zoning, you're wanting to take into account more than just that piece of property.
You.
You wanna take in infrastructure, you wanna take in growth patterns, you wanna take in, can it handle the traffic? So, if you're going to shape that, then there needs to be a difference in the lot that they can buy inside a city limit and the one that they can buy outside. Because the smaller the lot that we cut down, if we cut down our lot size, like them Hunans out of Jerison City up there have in some of what they got, and they got them stacked side by side, the rural roads in this county will not handle that kind of traffic.
Okay.
So if you're going to do that, then how far does our authority extend for us to make the developer pull that road? Does he have to come all the way to the fore lane? Does he have to come all the way to a major state artery? How far does our thing extend? I mean, to develop that thing to come down to a thirty thousand square foot lot, if he's, let's say that he's out back in New Market, then does he have to come into New Market city limits with the road improvements? Does he have to go two miles? Does he have to go four miles? What is it?
Yeah. Okay, so, let's, let's look at it from this standpoint. Let's say that we put that in there and we had the five acre road, alright? And we told the people, said, you know what? You can come in and ask for a rezoning. Alright, so, let's, if, if this was outside of city limits, we would probably, at this point in time, we would probably say, go to A1, alright? So, we could always say, you're, if you're on greenbelt, you can sell five acres, you want smaller than that, when you come out, you would have to go to A1, which we already have an effect, which would, they would have to meet that lot size. Would that work? In other words, you pull it out, then you follow the guidelines for A1, for, for housing and that type of thing, but we may limit, we may take some of the commercial stuff out of A1 at that point in time.
Yeah, but that still does not address the question of how you handle that growth pattern, and you put that out there, does it?
Well, okay, let's say we don't have the five acres, alright? Anyway, now we look at a track right here and we're saying, this is A1, next forty acres there, okay? Legally today, what could they do?
They can get forty houses and the roads in there.
Well, about thirty-eight.
Thirty.
And that's all I'm saying.
I am so sorry.
Thirty-six.
All I'm saying is, is this, is that if they wanna sell five acres, they can, okay?
Yeah.
That's where it goes. But if they wanna go smaller than that, then they take their property out of greenbelt and they go to A1, and then they can, they can.
So what's the property, what was the property in greenbelt zone?
A1.
A1.
A1. So they're not going anywhere? All they're doing is following the restrictions in A1.
Right, but all I'm saying is, is they're telling me that they want their property to be agricultural, okay? And, and they've got it there at that point in time, for us as planners, alright? They wanna make that change to go to a higher density, then, then, I think they need to take that out for a certain set of amount of time before we can go there, cause it gives us an opportunity to say, you know what, that may or may not work there.
I'll buy in on that, but you've still not solved the infrastructure problem that you have, if I pull it out and I'm out of greenbelt five years, and I come back and say I'm wanting to go to R1.
Well, you may not get R1.
Or whatever I'm going to, and I wanna put a higher density in than I can in A1, it still does not improve that road.
I, I understand that, but you may not, but whenever you come and ask, and ask us to go to that R1, we're gonna look at the infrastructures that is there, and we may not make that recommendation based upon that.
Unless they do improve the road.
Here's the problem you're getting into, if you tell them, if you come out for five years.
I'm not saying it has to be five years.
Well, two years, pick a number.
I'm just saying a year, it, what it does is, it puts us on notice that, that, that their intentions are changing for the use of the land.
But when you make that, that rule, that if you want to change it, you have to come out, then what are you gonna do when you, you don't give it to them?
There's no guarantee, there's no guarantee you'll ever get your property rezoned, from that standpoint, is that right?
I know, but you, you've made a rule that says you have to, to get it rezoned.
No, what the rule's gonna say is, if you come out, then this is what your property's gonna be rezoned, and this is the density that's gonna be there.
Then they would have to improve the road.
Well, if they, depending on the development that they have as far as it goes, only thing I'm saying is, it puts us on notice that their intent for that property, i- i- there's gonna be some intent to change that property's use, and at that point in time. And so when they come to us and everything else, and we get down and say, okay, look, this property here, these people will take it out, cause that means that they may be ready to sell it, or the land use is gonna change, this, that, whatever. So we know that that property has the potential at that point in time to change to be, to, to a different type of, of use or development. You know, you know where I'm, you know, you know why I'm coming to here? And I see this coming, I shouldn't say it, but I see it coming. The reason I'm saying that is this, is that, and I'm looking at, I'm looking at our corridors on each end of our county as far as it goes, and I just have a gut feeling, and, and I, I think it's more than that, I have a gut feeling that there's gonna be just a land grab on this in here because, because of the things that are gonna happen on both ends of our county, because people are gonna be attracted here, and they're gonna need a place to live because maybe the jobs is gonna be required. And I can see that coming. I, I see it coming. So my thing is, is this, is that if I can at least control it to some faction, cause right now, when they come to us, as far as that goes, if it meets the guidelines, they can cut it up all day long. But my thing is this, is that if we have at least a little bit of time before they can do that, and they know that, then, then they may not be as aggressive in going after some of those properties. But here's the thing, I don't feel like I can do it just for a portion of part of the county if I don't do it for all the county. Now, I may not be.
I would agree with you.
I may not be able to sell that plant, but I'm saying that I'm looking at something because I'm afraid, I'm, I'm afraid, I, I, I just see it coming. I, I, I really do, I, I, I'm afraid we're gonna, it, it's gonna hit us, and it's probably gonna be, uh, I, I think it's gonna happen.
No doubt it's gonna happen, I already get the call, but.
Now, I'm saying that, at least that way, we have, we, we got a little time, it gives us a little time, because when they come in here with the plans anymore, say one, here, here's my plan, I, I'm, I'm getting my lots in there, and the next guy comes, and the next guy comes, and the next guy comes, and before long, all that area in there, because it's the closest to where the actions happen and everything else, and we get there, and, and, I don't know, I, that's, 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 the, and that's the only reason I've come up, that's, that is the only reason I come up with, what I've come up with on that.
So what you're saying is, it, it would come out of greenbelt to even be considered to be rezoned, but there's no guarantee you're getting rezoned, even if you take it out of greenbelt?
If it comes out of greenbelt, it's gonna go into A1, okay? No matter what, here, here we go, and whatever the density is, that we, we say for A1 is what they would have.
It is A1 already.
No, it's, we're gonna, we're, we classify it as greenbelt, that's what we classify it, as greenbelt, and we would have designation of what's allowed in greenbelt, why not?
Oh. So you're, okay, so you're changing complete, okay, I could, I wasn't following it at all because.
Okay.
You mean creating a new zone?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
The greenbelt.
The greenbelt zone, and when you're in that zone, if you wanna sell off, you can sell off five acres, no, no issues, no problems, no ifs, ands, or buts, which state law says you can do.
Let me ask you a question.
But if you come in here and you say, you know what, I wanna get my properties out cause I wanna go, I wanna sell, I wanna do something else, and we're gonna say, fine, you gotta come out of greenbelt, and when you come out of greenbelt, we're gonna let you, this is the zone that we will, we will lot you to, you want anything more than that? You gotta come and ask for it to get rezoned. And, and at that point in time, but what it does is, it, I think it gives us a little time. And I'm afraid, I'm scared that we're gonna run out of time on, on this, I, I, I am, I'm, you know, what worries me is, is.
So what, what happens?
Here's the thing, is even if this talking about it, there's probably gonna be, once it gets out, there's gonna be people gonna go out there and gonna be scared, and they're gonna sell, and the word's gonna get out, all the county's gonna do this, that you better sell your property now, and, and, and that's not what I want, but I'm just saying is, is that it, it was a way for me to look to see that there was a way that I could have some little bit of control on tracks that, that would be.
Okay, so let me, let me riddle you this.
Okay.
Comes out of greenbelt, your new zone, you're making a new zone. It comes out of that, it goes into A1, they sell a five acre track.
Nine A1.
A1, A1 will be whatever we determine we want those to be, okay?
Okay.
And you know, we may say, alright, you're coming to A1 acre and a half, and, you know, or we may say acre and a quarter, I don't know, whatever we, we feel like is comfortable with on the density i- is on that as far as that goes, uh, but that may be the minimum. And then they may say, well, you know what, I want lower than that, I said, okay, then you need R1. Well, how am I gonna get R1? You, then you gotta come for us and we'll make a recommendation, and if county commission seeks for it, then you'll get R1.
So how long you gotta wait? I mean, you talked about the, the coming out, right?
Okay, so how long?
The time, because it, if you, i- if I go out there, Mr. Bryan, and he's in greenbelt, and I say, hey, I wanna buy that piece of property out there, old Jim Taylor farm. It comes out, it goes into A1. I sell whatever, a two acre, you say it's two acre, I gotta sell.
Yeah.
I sell it, and two, and next month, the person that buys it comes in and says, I wanna make three lots out of it. Into R, I wanna go to R1, thirty thousand square foot, I wanna make three lots out of it.
Well, if you.
Is there, is there a time on your plan? Is there a time that they've got to wait, or can they do it month, back to back?
In other words, if they come in for A1 and they get that lot, and they sub, and then they wanna subdivide it into three tracks, and they want that to go to R1, right? Okay, so first and foremost, when they come in here, uh, as far as it goes, we may say, we don't recommend it going to R1.
You, you don't do anything right now outside of growth area, R1?
So.
Haven't in here.
You know, that's, that's my thing, they don't necessarily get it, all they're guaranteed is, is to go, is, when they come out of greenbelt, and what they're guaranteed to go is, is that, while they're in greenbelt, they sell five acres, when they come out of greenbelt, they would go into, to an A1 zone, or whatever we designate that as, as far as that goes, uh, it didn't, a- and at that point in time, then we, we would set a time, uh, but, uh, from that, you know, actually what would be is, when they come out of greenbelt, they get ready to come out of greenbelt, there would be a set amount of time that we would say, okay, after this set amount of time, your property will be A1. At that point in time, then you're allowed to do whatever's in, in A1.
So you may have to wait, if you come out, if you say, I wanna come out of greenbelt, you may have to wait a tax year, or whatever the time is, you've gotta wait X number of time to come into A1.
Yeah, and I think that the time.
And if you come into A1, then if you gotta wait X number of time to go to higher density out of that, that's what I'm asking, because.
No, after that, I think once you come out of the greenbelt, as far as that goes, uh, once you, once you come out of the greenbelt and you, and you're in, say, the A1 at that point, you, after you waited your time, you got A1. If you wanna go to R1, you could, but what do you think the odds are of that's gonna be happening? Probably not to wait, cause we don't, we don't wanna rezone free properties into R1, though, it, it's not a bad thing to, certain times, but there again, and you know, here's the thing, we may go back and look at R1 zone and we may say, okay, here, when you come to A1, acre and a half lot, you come to R1, nine tenths of an acre lot, whatever.
No acre.
Well, you may up, you may up the lot sizes.
But while we're doing this, if you're gonna do that, shouldn't we have a plan in place that addresses this infrastructure and density problem in the rural areas of the county? Because that's what's got us in trouble on the lake, that's what's got us in trouble in the other areas, because we didn't have it, so if you're gonna redo this whole thing, now's the time to do it.
Okay, so what you're saying is, is that when somebody comes in and they have a piece of property and they wanna subdivide, alright? And they come in and say, okay, I'm gonna take the A1 zone and I'll take the, the, the lot size at an acre and a half, and I said, we're gonna live with that, alright? S- so at that point in time, what are the restrictions we would put on them that we don't already have?
Well, I think if you're gonna, if you're gonna do that, then if you're gonna lower the dens, I mean, if you're gonna lower the density ever in that area, if they want it, I don't know that you can do it at that first step, at the A1.
Okay.
But if you want to go to the second step, we need to have a standard that says, this has gotta be a collector road, this has gotta be a major artery, this has gotta be a whatever. So we don't end up with like on Coal Road with a hundred houses on a path up through there, up top the hill. But, so, I'm saying if we're gonna put that in place, then we need to have, we only have, we only have R1, or we only have R2, or whatever the designation is, if it's thirty thousand square foot lots, you can only put them on these kind of roads, if that road is not there, you have to improve it.
Okay, so what we could do is, is that basically our road plan that would be laid over this at that point in time, we would go through for these parcels and we would say, alright, so, we have you on greenbelt, okay? And so you wanna come off of greenbelt, and you think you wanna s- subdivide your property, well, we're gonna look here and we're gonna say, you know what, you're sort of a class three type property, because here's what's gonna take to, to make you get anything else. And we could give them options to bring that up to that, as far as that goes, and we could say that, say, you know what, you're, as far as development, you're sort of, you're not a class one, you're about, you're about a class three because of, of, for the density that you're asking for. And I said, so, here are your options. Uh, you wanna get to, you wanna get to class two or class one? This is, we're looking at this parcel here, that's what you may have to do, uh, and I, you know, I hope that's not, we don't make sort of hackaway complications as far as that goes, but there again, we already have a road plan, we know what our major collateral roads are, and our, our tributary roads and, and everything else.
What's your opinion, Jordan? You're sitting there studying and pondering awful lot.
I agree with what you said, that, um, you gotta plan your infrastructure, I mean, this is what long range planning is, is, and that's what we're doing right now in a casual way, but that's what long range planning is all about, is figuring out where, where's the most suitable for growth? Where, where should the infrastructure be improved? Um, you know, where, where do we want our primary commercial corridors, where, where are we okay with higher residential density, and then you, you have to look at the whole picture and, and then start, um, you know, I agree with what Terry's saying about really just bringing, bringing the current land use in congruence with the zoning, I mean, that's important too. But then you do some long range future planning about, well, you know, is that what we want it to be in the future, you know? You can't corral people into certain areas, no, but there are certain areas that are more suitable for, for residential, for higher densities, and so figuring out what There are certain areas that are more suitable, but, but, for example, for higher densities, and so figuring out what those areas are. And then trying to plan the infrastructure. You know, that's, that's what I do.
I just do that as, as an idea.
I, I'm not, I, I wouldn't follow you to start with, that you had a, you were creating a, another.
Yes, because that's what I'm looking at, and the only reason I'm doing that was, is that people have made, have, have basically told us that. This is what we wanna use our land for, okay, uh, to that extent. And if they change their mind, they have the right to change their mind, as far as that goes, but at least when they change their mind. It gives us a, a little bit of time to adjust to saying, you know what? I know you wanna change your mind, and what you wanna go to, but let us show you what our guidelines are. You see this little road that you're out here, that you're, that you're probably gonna have to subdivide off of? Unless you do A, B, C, D, you're probably not gonna get to do. As much as you think that you would wanna do, and so. Uh, to me, that would be the, the thing. Uh, but the other thing that it sort of does. And this is what I, I'd always hoped is, is that we have a lot of developers. That will go by the land, and then come to us and say, well, let me do this so I can make this work. So the question to me would be, is that, before that could happen. Developers come to us and say, before I buy this land. Based on what's here, and this is what I wanna do, what do I have to do? They don't buy a pig in the public, they know upfront as far as it goes, it gives them an opportunity, that's what I'm try, that, that's what I'm trying to really get.
Well, it's, it's the same thing with what we talked about, having designating those commercial corridors. For business cor- or business corridors, or whatever you wanna say, I mean. And I've said this time and time, and as sad as it makes me. At some point in time, going down that four lane is going to be commercial or industrial. There is no, it's just a matter of time.
I, I'm sure.
And, and is, and I can say that, cause I'm there, I've, you know, from, from my place to Knoxville. Is going to be commercial or industrial at some point in time.
You just wanna get the best.
But if everybody, but if everybody knows that that's where we're, we'd like for you to put a business.
Yeah.
Then we're saying in this county, these are the places we want the business and commercial to go, cause we, we're establishing these corridors. So if we're gonna do, if we're gonna do what we're talking about here, those need to be put in too.
I, I agree, I, 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 I know that's part of the puzzle, I, 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 we, I agree with you a hundred percent on that one, it's just that. Uh, I, I'm trying to look at some, uh, some bigger tracts of land there as far as it goes before. We, I mean, wh- what scares me is, is that they're gonna come out here, because people are gonna get, the sharks are gonna get out there. And they're gonna look at some of these tracks, and they're gonna say, you know what, this can, this park, this can, it's gonna be a hot place, because. Everybody's brother's gonna need a place to live, and say, whatever, and before long, it's got ahead of us. I'm just trying to head it off the path, I'm not saying they're not, it's not gonna end up being developed, I'm just saying at least, uh, you know. I, I, like, when I first came here. We'd have seven plants a night, have picture plus, plus lots on them, uh, at the time, you know, and you were thinking, when's it ever gonna stop? Uh, but that, I mean, that was, that was the case, it did slow down, but I'm just saying, it was just like seeing, it was just one after the other, every kind of game. Big multiple lots like that, people wanted to develop. It could happen again.
Well, you can stop that real quick by putting five acre tracks as a minimum in A one. And the study that they're fixing to do, I don't know what it'll come up, but we did a study, growth awareness study fifteen years ago. And the, their recommendation to this body, they didn't listen to it, was five acre tracks in A one. What's the million, and it never got even brought up? So. That was fifteen years ago.
Don't be smiling, Kenny.
I know where the pushback's gonna come from.
One acre is pretty.
I, I, I know where the push, I know where the pushback's gonna come from, as far as that goes, I mean.
But that would stop growth pretty quick, you one acre.
Yep, but here's the thing.
Developers aren't interested in that.
Well, they are here. But here's the thing, I, I'm, I'm at least giving them an option. I'm at least giving them an option now, that if they take their property out of Greenbelt, and they come in, they tell us, and says, you know what, our land use is gonna change. And we end up waiting to say, okay, when you come out, you're gonna go to this, this, this designation right here, and this is your lot size. As far as it goes, and the way we have determined that is, is basically is, is that, when we look at this partial right here, and everything else, and we're saying. You don't have enough infrastructure there to, to go any more than what we're saying the density's gonna be. And, uh, so, my thing is, is that I, I think if I was to do the rules. And I bought a piece of property, I would come in here before us, and before you even went that much further, and say, I'm looking at this track here. These are my intentions. What do I meet the guidelines to be able to, to get that done? And we'll look at, and say, well, you're coming off State Road, we've looked at your topography, you know, when you submit your, your plan, everybody, everything, you don't have to have a house site on it. This, that, whatever, you've got some utilities there, and we would probably say, we can justify that. And we, we could probably say we could justify it. And I say that, and everything else, and we would feel good about it, and we could, we would say, okay, we're gonna recommend that to go to that zone. But, the guy over here says, I don't want that there, I don't want you to put that there. No, don't do that, don't, don't do that, I don't, that's not what I want there, and so.
There's the end of it.
There's the end of it, that's right, because that, that, that can happen, you know? The commission would have to stick to, sort of stick their guns once we come to this, and, and our reasoning behind it.
Good luck for them.
Well, it's not if, it's not if it's.
You got one from fifth district, it's a problem on this.
Yeah, I don't even get a buck, but I watch him step up there and two people.
All I'm, all I'm saying is, is that if it's laid out, if it's laid out, as far as that goes, and, and to our guidelines, and here's the, cause here's the thing. We, we're gonna come up with this a, as a zoning change, so, so county commission would have to vote.
Yeah, they'll have to, yeah, oh yeah, they'll have to approve.
So, my, what I'm getting at is, is if you're saying, if it comes through and it, and it's approved, then.
Back it up.
What, yeah, yeah, that's it, yeah.
Back it up.
No more politics.
Yes, back it up.
Well, I understand, I'm, I'm, I, I agree with you, and it's gotta, we've got, if we're gonna do. If we're gonna change what the next twenty-five years looks like for the county, we gotta get started on it. And we gotta, we've got to figure out some things that we've not done. Just like the thing was, where Mr. Bark brought up, seven percent of the lots got to be buildable. I mean, those things are tremendous, those reveal dividends, had we had those in place. Half of the lots that's been cut up on the lake would have never been built on, they would have never been there.
You're right about that.
Well. I don't know, those are, that's just some of the things that I, I've been thinking about, and I, I just foresee some things that's gonna hit us that, um. Trying to cut it off at the pass, and, uh, I just feel like it's coming, it's just a matter of, we, it's gonna start.
Can you put the five acre deal in for a while? And just a couple more for you? Well, no, we can call it down.
It's been tried before, ain't nobody vote for that.
I would put it in, but then I'd never get it out.
No, that, yeah, you're right.
Well, I thought you meant to put it in.
Well.
That's why I like the option of the, being able to take, they can sell five acres, and they can take it out. And then what they, they have the option in, when they come out, they would be in that particular, that, that particular zone, okay? That's where it goes, and you, you know, the, 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 the Greenbelt thing could be, is, is like an overlay itself. Alright, so when you come out of that, basically, cause this is the zone you're gonna go in, and this is the density that you're gonna have. And if you want more than that, if you want a lower density than that, then you're gonna come, have to ask and get it approved.
For what the guidelines are for that.
What the guidelines are.
Yeah.
That way they know that they would have to char- what they would have to charge per lot size.
Well, that, that's up to them, how they negotiate that, 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 all I'm saying is this, is that if those are in place. And I come in and I buy this piece of property, as far as that goes, I know, at that point in time, I know what the process is. If I have, or intend to change the use and go to a different way. At that, uh, a- a- and, and in other words, I, I'm buying this as a development, and these are, these are my intentions. And when they come to us and say, I'm gonna take this out of Greenbelt, and we're gonna say, okay, this is what we're gonna zone the property. So if you've developed to today, this is, this is, this is the DC, and this is what you gotta do, alright? If you want more than that, if you want a lower density than that, you're gonna come to act, and you're gonna have to ask us to rezone that property. And then I said, then, we're gonna look at the, the infrastructure, and we're gonna rate that as a, maybe as a class one, class two, or class three development. And that being said, this is the improvements that you're gonna have to make, to get this down here before we even consider taking to that zone. So. So, so what I'm saying is, th- there's a possibility that there's gonna be parcels out there that could get rezoned R one. That might be outside the growth boundary, because they meet all the criteria that we set down. And is there anything wrong with that? Because here's, what I've got is, is that I may have properties inside, uh, inside, inside the growth boundaries, as far as it goes. That we may look at, and we may decide, you know what? Yeah, I know it's inside the growth boundary, but based on that, that, that doesn't mean anything, because this property's not suitable to go to any higher density. And we would make them leave that as an A one, even though in, in the past, we have rezoned, some of those properties are R one. So it's gonna affect inside and outside the growth boundary.
The threshold, basically.
The threshold, yes.
So you're gonna have two different? Things, or you're gonna have one thing inside and outside?
That's the way I'm looking at it.
One?
And I'm sure they agree, but inside the growth.
Because here's, yeah, there is, and so what if it's not, what, what, even though it's inside the growth boundary, what if it's not suitable? As, as a property outside the growth boundary, to go to, to a lower density? Why just being inside that growth boundary, would we say, well, you're inside the growth boundary, and so you're asking for R one? And that's been our, our, that's what we've looked at in the past, and that's, that's been our policy. Well, that's not always necessar- that, that might not have been the, the best thing, as far as it goes, but I'm just saying that now. What it does to me is, it puts all parcels e- on the same, on the same level, when we look at them. It doesn't matter for inside or outside the growth boundary, that's where it goes, we're looking at, we're gonna look at the, the partial. And the access, and we're gonna give it a class and says, you wanna go to that higher density, this is what it takes. But just because you're in the growth boundary, that doesn't necessarily mean that you're automatically gonna get an R one. Well, you may look in here and say, no, you're gonna have to do this, 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 and this, just like the guy out here does to get an R one there.
Question right quick, are those bailiffs still out there, and do we still need them?
No, they could probably hit home with it.
Well, they're didn't pay.
Oh, okay.
I get it, don't tell them.
Alright.
But, I guess.
All I'm saying is.
Troublemaker, right?
There's pros and cons, I mean.
But do we want to do that, and from the fact of, are we still trying to push? Density into the cities, because that's where your sewer and services and all that is. Do we, do we have an incentive to put that, to move them in there?
We, okay, there is that incentive, okay, and that's, that's what, what the growth boundary has done before. But you know what's happened? Is that some, there are some in the cities now are pushing back, says, no, don't send us anymore, okay? Uh, from that standpoint, you know, that standpoint, uh, what you're gonna find is, that basically, the towns. Towns are just not gonna annex residential areas anymore, it's, it's just not cost, they, they lose money, you know, you know that as well as anybody. Time they provide the services and everything else, the tax.
Our house is a losing deal.
Well, all I'm saying is, is that, you know, there's gonna be, there's gonna be certain people that are gonna come and say, hey, I'm in the growth boundary, will you annex me? I wanna be in the city, I need the services, okay, and I understand that, but what I'm saying is this, is that. I don't like discriminating against people that, that lives right here. That, that lives, here's the growth boundary line, he lives here, he lives here, as far as it goes, and they have same identical properties. But we let this guy do something else besides this guy does, i- is that, is that, is that, is that lying that, that, that I don't like? I'm just saying that there could probably be some properties out, I'm gonna give you a prime example. And, and it was in here, and they came, we had a courtroom full of people, was on that property down on one thirty-nine, if you remember that. That was there, and it, that, from, from that standpoint, and it was on A one. And basically, what they were looking at was, is they wanted it to cut, they were looking, the developers were looking to go to R one. But it was right up against the growth boundary line, okay, which is for our guidelines. The highest and be- the highest and best use for that property, and the best protection for those people, even though. They didn't realize it, was for, uh, this, to zone that property to R one, yes, there was gonna be more houses, but they were better protected. From, from that standpoint, so the question would have been was, is that, okay, it was always a question down there, and the people brought this up. Well, the road is bad, and this, that, whatever, well, in our guidelines, as far as that goes, and we sit down there and look at it. And they came to us, and they said, we want R one, and we're gonna say, well, we're looking at your road frontage, and the way that it is, this, that, whatever. Unless you do A, B, and C. We don't think that property needs to be that, because of, of, of the way the road lays, or this, that, whatever. And, and, and so they're gonna say, okay, fine, what do I have to do to make that to get to a, to a, say, to an R one zone? And we're gonna say, well, you need this, you need this, and you need this, and if they're willing to fulfill and do that, as far as it goes. Then why would we not then let them go to that new designation?
And that's on State Always.
Well, I, yeah, but, they're, they're.
Well, I understand what you're saying, that we've, we've drew an arbitrary line that says, you can do it over here, but you can't there. But that's what the rule is right now.
We need to stick to that outside of growth area right now, is what I think you do.
But if.
But I'm not always saying that's the best.
No, it, it may not.
But if we're gonna, if you're gonna do the changes, I think you need, we need to take in the. The whole thing, not just that in a vacuum, we need to take in the infrastructure, how it's gonna impact the services. Can an ambulance reach there within a timely manner, can they get a, a deputy in? I mean, all of those things should come into that, and they should be a part of that formula that you're talking about.
This, somebody posed a question to me the other day. Do we have any rural area in Jersey County?
I don't. Yeah, I can take you to some.
So, so what?
Becker Road.
So.
I was there the other day, and it's still rural, a lot of farmland.
Okay.
And, and that's just one that I hadn't been on in a while, and I'm thinking, good Lord, they still lot with good land down around here. You know, around again, that's just one example.
Well, you leave New Market out there, and there's no houses been built around Mills Springs Road. Until you get out there to the old Bluegrass Farm, there's no houses been put on that road hardly in my lifetime. I mean, from, from there to Old Bluegrass Farm.
Yeah.
Where H C Stroud lived when he farmed at.
Right.
That house Tommy Hatmaker lived in, you start back towards New Market. There's only been, there's only been one house built.
Yeah.
Till you get back to right there at the end of the old west place.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's rural.
So, but give me a definition of what rural is, is it so many, is it the housing density that makes it rural? Or is accessibility that we're, that's so far out the, the, the long path there, that, you know, there's only one way in, one way out? Is that what makes it rural?
I think we're still a rural camp, overall.
You go, and you go out on Nancy's Ferry down there to the end where the ferry was.
Jordan was a day.
Don't tell me that's not rural down there.
Jordan sees some rural aesthetics.
Has that stayed in the fam- as a family farm, most of that?
Well, some parcels have been sold along at Nancy's Ferry, but what I'm saying, when you get down there, Nolan Knights and all them, they own that whole end of the river.
Yeah.
And they're not gonna.
And that's, that's rural, there's, I mean, there is one way in and one way out there.
It's a gay across rural place.
But they, yeah, there, there is still.
There's still some.
The lower, still rural. May not be another twenty-five years.
You tired?
Getting there.